Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Let's open the East Hampton Village zoning board meeting for January. First, we have to approve the minutes of December 13th, 2019. Is there a motion to accept the minutes as is?
Motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have two, not three determinations. The Lewis Family 2002 Trust on Lily Pond Lane will come in our February meeting. But we have the joint Zay One LLC and Zon Two LLC, 19 and 23 Chauncey Close. The disposition of application has been granted.
Ms. Marigold?
Yes.
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 Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
If anybody wants the full information, it is on record at the village hall. Now, for the continued hearings.
Was that for Zon Two?
Yes.
For both, okay.
Zay One and Zon Two, 19 and 23 Chauncey Close. We have two adjournments, which is the second part of Zay One and Zon Two LLC, 19 and 23 Chauncey Close. They request an adjournment until February 14th, 2020, Valentine's Day. Do I have a motion to accept that?
Motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
In the continued hearings, Adam P. Barto said 26 La Forest Lane has withdrawn his application. Nicole and we have Nicole and Alan Salmasi, 73 David's Lane, is also adjourned until February 14th. We'll accept that.
Motion.
Make a motion.
Motion, second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
So, for the first of the continued hearings, we have Robert W. and Rosalyn M. Walcott, 55 Toilsom Lane. Is the applicant present?
Yes. I would like to respond to the comments previously made by board members and explain them fully. Our request for their support of detached garage in front of the house at 55 Toilsom.
Is it attached, detached?
Detached, in front of the house. The original house at 55 Toilsom was built in 1965. The house was located 50 feet from the road. The garage was nonconforming due to it being over the side setbacks. The house was in very poor condition, and to call it the worst house on the street would not be an overstatement. The lot is approximately 460 feet long and only 80 feet wide. It is a deep, narrow lot that makes its best use challenging. We believe the best design for this lot is a house located further back from the road and a detached garage in front of the house, located approximately where the old garage was located, but now conforming to village setbacks. Based on your feedback, we have revised the garage plans as follows. The square footage has been reduced from 704 square feet to 598 square feet. This is now a normal size for two-car, for a two-car garage that can accommodate today's large vehicles. We have removed the additional space which was the off-season storage of outdoor furniture. I'd also like to address some other comments that the board made. The side elevation of the garage showed sliding glass doors. This seemed to cause an issue for some board members. There was never any intention for the space to be used for anything other than for cars and storage. These doors had been salvaged from a previous project, and we believe recycling them into this garage is a better idea than throwing them out. A board member suggested we move the house down closer to the street. This would only make the house subject to extra road noise. Toilsom has become an increasingly busy village pass-through. Another board member suggested we rotate the pool to accommodate a garage. This would place the pool over the pool setbacks. The garage would also be over the setbacks. The pool is currently a standard 18 by 36 pool. If we met setback rules, the pool would be 20 by 16. Mr. Hillow also asked if we planned to live in the house. Previously, I answered we were undecided. Mr. Hillow then added, "We have a reputation for building and selling houses." This is true, but we'd also live in them first. Our first house out here was sold to us by Mr. Hillow's wife. We lived in it for six years. The next house we purchased, we lived in for three years. The house after that, four years, and so on. I'm not sure why living in a house first makes a difference, but the influence is that it does. In conclusion, Toilsom was the worst house on the street. Our plan for, and if you look at the houses directly around it, this is 49 Toilsom, there's a house directly, sorry, garage directly in front. This is 61 Toilsom, they have a three-car garage. These are all attached directly in front. This is 54 Toilsom, a large garage directly in front. 59 actually has a cottage and a detached garage, which you can't really see, in front of the house. And this is 52 Toilsom. So, the plan we have, we think, can only add to the value of the neighborhood without any detriment to the character of the village. We hope you approve our plan for a detached garage, as it mirrors every immediate neighbor's garage on Toilsom and in no way harms or looks unfair to the village. Thank you.
Did you see Billy Hajek's memo about the garages on the street?
What, sorry? I did not.
No? Okay. No, because he actually goes through the different ones of that 52 Toilsom, it sits on the front plane of the house, it's compliant with the law. 54 Toilsom, it's attached to the house and therefore is compliant with the law. 59 Toilsom with a cottage is legally pre-existing, and you know, and so on. And do you want to?
I think every time we grant one of these garages in the front of the house, we regret it. That's my own personal opinion. Garage belongs in the back of the house or you're attached to the house.
Billy's analysis showed that only one of those garages that exists in the front of the house was granted variance, as the others were historically there.
Right.
And again, it was starting from a year ago. It's a brand-new house.
Yeah, that's a.
Well, can I make the point, is that right?
Yes, identify yourself, please.
Yeah, I'm Rosalyn Walcott. I'm the homeowner of the house. I think the point is, the garage was originally in that location.
Will you speak into the microphone, please?
Yes. So, the garage technically hasn't really moved. The house has moved. What we did was, we tried to keep the garage where it was, give or take, but we've moved the house. So, it's not that we're adding a new garage, we just moved the house. The other thing we'd like to say is, we're going to try and landscape the garage as much as possible from the street, so it really won't be a visible structure. It's going to have trees and hedges in front of it, so we really don't think it's going to be something that looks unattractive or unpleasant from the road. We hope that's going to make a difference.
Regulation is, the garages are supposed to be at the back of the house, and this is a bad precedent.
Yeah, we understand that, which is why we're asking for the variance.
And the garage on the, on the original house was attached to the house, correct?
Yes, it was.
So, it could be. We're not going to design it for you, but I think going around the board, they're reluctant to grant this type of variance.
Is there anyone from the public?
Why?
Anyone from the public?
We're not closing it.
Oh.
Just talking.
Oh, oh, oh. You have a back-granted variance for another house on the street, though, is that right? You have historically granted one.
Is there one?
I don't recall a variance for a detached garage in the front of the house, no. I don't, I didn't see one anyway.
Yeah, I mean, I know Toilsom Lane is changing, has changed over the last, very quickly over the last 10 years or so. There are very nice houses on it, but I think we would like to see it.
The garage should belong in the back of the yard.
Yeah.
But again, the lot is 80 feet wide, it's very difficult to get a.
Yeah, well, there are a lot of narrow lots on that street. 71 Toilsom's 85 feet, and 59 is only 60 feet wide, 55 is 80 feet. So, you're sort of in the norm there.
Why do they all have the, have the garages in front?
Well, according to our village planner, they, most of them have houses, have garages in the back or on the side or detached, attached. So, is there anybody who would like to speak on this, in the audience? No? Okay, so, one, two, three, four. No, sorry.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Six feet high.
Motion to close the hearing?
So, move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next, we have George E. Doty Jr. and Leah Ellen Spelman at 25 15 Lane. The applicant present? Good morning.
So, I've become a celebrity in my own household. The last, last time, big news, I asked a lot, and hopefully my line will be asked too little. Mercifully, no one reads the East Hampton Star in December. I'm not sure about January. Well, we'll see. In any event, so, I got feedback apparently that I asked a lot, and so, I cut back the ask by two-thirds and find myself here today.
Okay. You know, I thought about your muddy feet, and in the summer, when you're running from the pool to your spa, you can have grass under your feet, it's not going to be muddy. But I don't know.
I'm working a muddy spa, though.
A muddy spa, that's true.
I have no issues with it.
Okay.
I think you've, you've taken out quite a bit, and I agree, I don't have a.
Yeah, and walkways are, it's, walkways are fairly benign.
People make a noise in walkways.
Yeah. Larry?
I'm okay.
All right.
Good.
Okay.
That's it. Thank you. Motion to close this hearing?
So, move.
Oh, audience, audience, audience. There's nobody in this audience that wants to talk to us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, for the new hearings, we have Joseph R. and Amy M. Perella at 43 Turbell Lane. Ms. Bennett?
Application of Joseph R. Perella and Amy M. Perella, subtopic number 30113105, variance for 278 zoning, to construct a detached lot. There is a question, a separate piece in the front yard, within a front yard where detached garages are prohibited within a front yard. The subject property is 189,660 square feet in area and is located at 43 Turbell Lane in Residence District R160. This property fronts on Hook Pond and is located in FEMA flood zone AE elevation 11. This project is classified as a Type II action in accordance with CEQA.
Good afternoon, or good morning.
Good morning.
Mary Jane Nisado, we're applying against Nisado 21 South Main Street. Going after, the application for you is to construct a detached garage in a definitional front yard. The property is in the R160 zone. It's oversized, it has nearly 190,000 square feet. There is an existing house on the property that's been there since 1901. Where is the house? Basically, the rear yard of this property is affected by the setbacks from the wetlands. So, this property, the reason we're before you for the definitional front yard variance is because this is the location that pretty much meets all of the other requirements, wetland setbacks and dimensional requirements. The house is set back 152 feet from the street. This garage meets the minimum setback that would be required if the house was foregone, in other words. It has to be at least 80 feet, and it's more than that. It is actually located, we're proposing it at 97.7 feet, so, which is nearly 100 feet off the street. This is at the terminus of Turbell Lane. It is on a, and across the street from where this garage is proposed is a tennis court. So, this is as it is now with Hook Pond, with the house. Here's the house, we've blown it up.
Could you go back to the microphone, please?
As you can see, the most impacted across the street is a tennis court that's already fairly actually even closer to the street than we're proposing here. The practical difficulty is Hook Pond and the location of the house. Now, is there any way that we can alleviate this other than a variance? Well, it's impractical, but if we lifted the house and brought it closer to the street, obviously, that would be a way to do this. But under the circumstances, the size of this property, that it's more located toward the side yard, as you can see, it's not in front of the house per se, it's in the definitional front yard, in the sense of the distance between the house and, and the street, it is within that area. So, frankly, if you look at it, it's really a side yard situation for visual impact, and considering Hook Pond, the wetlands, for us to push it back, we would need wetlands variances. We submit to you that the practical difficulty here is the sighting of the existing house in the wetlands. We don't feel that it's going to be an unnecessary or a detrimental effect to the neighborhood. As I said, it's on the terminus. We have the short side facing the street, it's opposite the tennis court. We also have the, it does have an environmental impact. In fact, we're doing this to minimize the environmental impact, to keep away from the wetlands here. This is a, a house that was constructed in 1901. The applicants and owners have taken great care to maintain this house and its existing, to maintain the integrity of this house. It's in the FEMA zone, they're on the process of doing a renovation. If you go out there, it's almost being completed. So, they've taken care to actually preserve the character of this property. We feel that attaching a garage to the side of it, although it's dimensionally feasible, that it would really take away from the integrity of this house.
I just had wanted to separate the last, since we all went around and we expressed dismay at garages in the front, I want to separate out.
This is a different circumstance.
No, that's why, I mean, I'm coming behind that case, and that's why I'm trying to distinguish with you several things.
Yeah, well, I just want to tell anybody watching LTV or anything that, you know, one is a small, narrow property on a very busy street, and this is over four and a half acres, and it, and it goes this way, and basically, the garage, we're calling it front yard, but it's actually.
It's a definitional front yard only.
Yeah, it's on, it's on the side.
I think the visual takes away. This is really to the side of the property? This also respects the neighbor, because if, actually, if we pushed it back, the building, this neighbor, the visual.
Well, it's, it's not really in the front yard.
So, this is the ideal location, taking into respect the substantial wetlands, Hook Pond in the back.
I just have one question. This property came up a couple of years ago, and that, there is a, a second building on the property.
Yes.
That was labeled as a garage.
There is a quote garage in, beneath this building.
And what is that, what is that used for?
And it's used for storing the cars off-season, because to cut a driveway across here, we would have a substantial impact on the wetlands. So, for day-to-day, for day-to-day use as a garage, it is really not practical, and moreover, we would then have to put in a regular driveway to that garage. And that will have a substantial runoff effect to Hook Pond. They do drive over the lawn to store their cars in the winter there, off-season, but that's only like a twice-a-year event versus driving in and out of there.
Well, now, when they, we'll have a, a real garage in, in the front, won't they store, why wouldn't they store their cars there?
It's basically storage space is what we're talking about.
So, that's going to end up being storage.
It also has a port cochere.
Right.
You don't use that for, as a garage?
They use the garage to store their vehicles, off-season, but they don't drive in and, it's my understanding that it is not a daily, where, you know, where you come to your house, drive into the garage, and then walk over to the house.
The port cochere?
Built the accessory.
The accessory, yes. The accessory building.
That's not really a garage, but that, they, they do, I mean, that's where the, for rain et cetera, but it's not, it's not enclosed storage here, so.
Now, the, the survey says there's no accessory buildings, or in effect is, you have zero square feet existing. If you look at the survey, existing accessory buildings, zero square feet.
That's the, the existing garage that sits next to the pond, or built, the existing building that's.
Is that accessory?
That has a, living quarters on the second floor.
So, it's not considered accessory?
It's not, correct. So, it's all considered principal.
You can't have, living in an accessory building.
Okay.
And that was a pre-existing, non-conforming, secondary.
So, that's counting the total GFA.
Yes.
Principal, correct.
And, and we are not exceeding that as well, because as I indicated, although it's in the R160, this property has nearly 190,000 square feet in size. I mean, if you look at it, it's really sort of situated in the side yard, it's opposite the, as I said, the tennis court. It is not going to have a visual impact on, on its neighbors as far as being, looking in front of the house, directly in front of the house. I believe that it is substantially different from the case that you had previously. Moreover, I think the trump here is that we have, the, the locations on this property that would be a definitional rear yard, all would require wetlands variances because of Hook Pond.
Can we put in a determination that the existing garage stays unfinished on the first floor, that it can't be, it can't be a living space?
Excuse me? Oh, you're saying that for us not to convert the garage area on, on that building to?
To, to the space.
I believe that, that, that is not going to be an issue.
Yeah, I mean, I think that would be an expansion.
We're with this living space now.
Above.
Yeah.
That we're not going to expand.
Yeah, in other words, you can't expand it.
In fact, in fact, I don't believe that you can. Anyway, as, as I said, it's a pre-existing, non-conforming situation, so, we would have to come.
Yeah, it would require a variance to do that.
Right. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak on this? No? Do I have, yes? Larry?
Okay.
Great. Thank you. Do I have a motion to close the hearing?
So, move.
Second, all in favor? And now, we have Jaclyn R. Williams, New York, QPRT, and Eugene F. Williams III, New York, QPRT, 29 Jones Road, and no variance is necessary, so we'll just skip over that one. And James D. Danella, 49, La Forest Lane is next. Is the applicant present?
Application of James D. Danella, subtopic number 3011267, variances, construction of 278, 3A, to make alterations for residents located 47.9 feet from the front yard, where the required setback is 34 feet. Sorry, it's 5,000. Sorry, close call.
Hi, good morning, Andrew Goldstein. My firm represents the applicant. We could just have a minute.
Pam didn't finish reading.
She didn't read the termination?
She didn't finish reading yet. We're in a choke break.
5,679 square feet, and the existing residence contains 6,407,000 square feet. 2.1-foot variance is requested from section 278 3A 4A to make alterations for residents located 47.9 feet from the front yard, where the required setback is 34 feet. An 8.7-foot variance is requested from section 278 3A 4A to make alterations for residents located 25.3 feet in the side yard lot line, where the required setback is 34 feet, and any other will be necessary. The subject property is 49,712 square feet in area and is located at 49,400 in Residence District R160. This project is classified as a Type II action in accordance with CEQA. No? Sorry. Okay.
Thank you.
Andrew Goldstein for the applicant. Mr. Danella, this is an app, this is, I was replying for a GFA variance and a variance from the side yard setback requirement. The property, house is nonconforming, pre-existing nonconforming as to each of those. We've put up some views of the house to put it in perspective, going from left to right, from, yeah, left to right. The property begins where the mailbox is, and you can see as La Forest Lane curves around, there is a thick hedge in front of it. The next shot shows La Forest Lane just a little bit further down, and the picture on the extreme right shows, actually, it's close up, as close as we could get to the hedge itself, showing the, sort of the vestige view of the house behind it. And finally, on the, on the floor is a picture of the house from the driveway. It's the only view of the house that's capable from the street, and would note that the requested gross floor area additions are all in the rear of the house. With regard to the five standards that the board has to consider, the board, the mass, the additional mass on this house is not visible from the street. The board has, on many occasions, said that in that, under those conditions, the additional, the variance for the gross floor area will not cause an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or detriments any nearby property. And that is exactly what we have here. Our memorandum contains, it's a partial list of the prior determinations in which the board has held that. The, the side yard variance will, will not further encroach into the side yard setback. There is a pergola on that side of the house. I think that's an accessory building, though. Accessory, deemed to be an accessory structure, and as with the piece of the pergola that's on the, the front of the garage that extends into the side yard. So, there is no, this house has been in this location, and at this excessive size, the exceeding size has exceeded GFA for many years, several years in any event, without causing any adverse comment. This addition, these three discrete additions, one which will make the, increase the size of the closet and the master bedroom, add a bay window to that, the second, which will add a stair landing and a small space for a home office, and the third, which will add a laundry room and a shower, will not impact any neighbor in their use or in their sight, by, by, because they are not visible. The property is thickly vegetated on all sides, and, and one cannot see in. I would note that the, the property itself is rather, is undeveloped, is underdeveloped because it is well under the applicable coverage, and there are no accessory buildings on this property.
And they have the right to put an accessory building on it.
They have a right to put an accessory building on the property, right. They have the right to put an accessory building on the property, right. But the point is the, I mean, it's, they would rather have the--
Bathroom and laundry room and--
Yeah.
But they all, they all could be in a pool house without a variance.
Well, except that the pool has to be in the middle of the backyard, in order to be conforming. The pool has to be 40 feet away from the property line. So, again, this is a case where the, this particular laundry room can't be seen from the street, so--
I don't agree with that logic, so--
What?
I don't, I actually don't follow that logic, that if you can't see it, it's okay, because our code doesn't follow that either.
Well--
You know, allowed is 5679 square feet. We're already once granted an increase, but if you take what is allowed and what is proposed, it's a 24--
25 percent, right.
25 percent increase of what is allowed, and that, that is under our criteria, that's called substantial, so.
Well, except for one thing. First of all, let me just say that the logic, it's not a question of logic, it's a question of precedent. And you, in order to depart from that precedent, I would ask, ask you to tell me how this application is different from the other, many applications in which you have said, if you can't see it, it doesn't affect neighborhood character.
The one that you rely on the most, McManus on Fifthian Lane, was--
I'm relying anything on the most, I'm relying on all of them.
You include that every single time, that if you can't see it--
I decided for different reasons.
That was a little flat piece of roof in between two higher roofs that we allowed them to fill in, just this tiny little flat place. And I think every one of your narratives, you know, hearkens back to McManus on Fifthian as if you can't see it.
Actually, not, Ms. Marigold, Ms. Marigold, let's understand, when we cite something for precedent, you said the purpose of the statute doesn't relate necessarily to the facts of any individual case. The purpose of the statute is so that the, if the additional mass doesn't overwhelm the street, doesn't affect the street, it doesn't affect neighborhood character. That's what you, this board has said. You've said this, and you voted on these applications yourself. If, in order to depart from that precedent, you need to have a fact particular to this application which would permit you to do that.
Okay, the fact is that it's almost 25 percent over what is allowed for the GFA, and that is a substantial increase. And you, in your narrative, you talked about that he wants to spend more time there, which, you know, it's a beautiful house, why wouldn't he? He'd like a home office. He has two living rooms on the first floor. I mean, I'm sure that some clever architect could carve out an office space, you know, for him.
Ms. Marigold, first of all, part of the 25 percent that you're alluding to, the 23 percent, is--
24.5.
24.5 percent is space that is legally pre-existing, non-conforming. He's not asking for a variance for that. And, in fact, it's not, by the code, 278-1B1A, that space is not subject to the code, he's not asking for a variance for that. This is not the first circumstance in which you've had this situation.
If we granted--
For instance, if I may--
Yes, sir.
You can say whatever you'd like. Yes?
If we granted the laundry room and the, and the bathroom, can we take, say they can't have a pre, you know, another structure for the pool house?
That's--
The lawyer--
Let me just say that that's something that is--
I'm talking to them.
I know, but I'm saying to you that that's not related to this application. We're not asking for anything having to do with accessory dwelling, accessory structure.
Well, see, if they won't do that, then they can have a pool house next month.
Let me just finish my precedence, and then you can make all the suggestions you want. The board has previously handled GFA applications where there's pre-existing non-conforming GFA, and they're asking for additional GFA. And I can say, based on my own experience on the zoning board, and having read every, every determination that this board has handed down since I left the zoning board, it's never, it's never categorized that pre-existing non-conforming GFA is part of the variance. Indeed, it's not subject to the code, and you can't bootstrap it into the code by saying it's part of the variance. But, for instance, the question you're talking about is substantiality. So, how has the board handled substantiality in these cases? Well, in the case of the Georgia Close Road application, you, which I have here, and I'll hand it up, you can put it in the record. In Georgia Close Road, there was a 971 square foot additional GFA requested on a pre-existing non-conforming property. Saved. And determination adopted in July of 2016, 971 square feet was an 11.7 percent variance, and the total excess, including that pre-existing non-conforming GFA, was 29.6 percent, 29.7 percent. And in, in, talking about substantiality, and again, I'm not analogizing the underlying facts here, I'm only talking about how you dealt with substantiality. You dealt, you said specifically, the variance of 971 square feet might be large, but the other circumstances mitigate against that.
What were the other circumstances?
You can't see it from the street.
That's only part of it, the many factors to making a decision.
Right, you know, that's what's, what's so dangerous about this, is because each one--
What question is, what part of this application where you can't see it from the street mitigates against granting this variance? Let me, let me just go through a couple of others where you did not--
No, I don't want to hear--
You don't want to hear my--
I don't want to hear the others, because each one, which is what we went over recently, each one has its own set of circumstances. You know, we just had two different garages in the front, but they are totally different. Now, I suppose, you know, for a lawyer, looking at them, you say, oh, we don't like garages in the front, and then we turn around, you know, 10 minutes later and say, it's okay. That is because each property is so different, and each set of circumstances so different. So, it doesn't help to quote these things.
Wait, 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 are you, I'm just, I'm, have you read these, all these other determinations?
Of course.
Oh, you, and so, and so tell me where our facts differ from the other determinations we've cited. We cited the Ziren application, in which there was a 10.21 percent variance, and the total excess was 21.2 percent. Again--
There's also a shift in the feeling of the village. I mean, if you, the feeling in the village is that houses are just getting bigger and bigger and bigger and bigger and bigger.
You're just citing this application based on a feeling in the village?
No, but I'm saying that, that you can quote determinations from five years ago, 10 years ago, whatever things have definitely changed.
We saw it for 2017, Ziren is 2017, not so long ago.
Great.
It's where you say, that the, where you say specifically that you can't see the property from the street, that's the only fact in Ziren. I mean, I'm asking you, as, just as a resident of the village, a taxpayer in the village, the code provides for variances. So, I'm asking you, in order to depart from these precedents, what fact is different in this case?
I believe in the Ziren, that was based on the need for an elevator, was the increase in the thing, because people are getting, getting older.
We're talking about substantiality. We're talking about the effect on the neighborhood.
There was a different--
You're talking, what is the, what is the difference, this, what is the difference that this additions will have on the neighborhood from Ziren or any of the applications we've cited? That's the question. The fact that he's using for an elevator is immaterial.
Now, I had a question that Billy brought up about the bedrooms and the sanitary system.
Well, that's a, that's a building permit issue, that's not, nothing for the zoning board.
Well, again, another factor, are there any other alternatives? It's a big house, and maybe part of the other house can absorb this.
He, he, he wants a, he wants a bigger closet in his master bedroom.
I understand that, but this is a big house.
You're saying, you're saying it's better he has a pool house than he has this addition to the house.
But there's another factor that you, what are the other alternatives that can achieve this? And it's a big house, and you can convert other factors to absorb this.
So, you're saying he should convert a bedroom to a closet?
I'm not, I'm not telling him what to do--
Is that a feasible alternative?
It's a big house, and there's a lot of alternatives.
Eight bedrooms is a big house. Eight demo bedrooms by the, by the, by the health department, that doesn't mean he has eight bedrooms.
I think that's, the plan say you have eight bedrooms.
Well, again, the bedrooms are irrelevant, this is a massing statute.
But he does have the space, and if there is a way of doing it without granting a variance, we have that right to--
You have to weigh that, it's a balancing test. You have to weigh that against the fact that there's no discernible effect on the neighborhood.
Again, there are various factors, that's one factor.
Well, you, so you're saying that where there's no effect on the neighborhood, and he has the ability somehow to turn a bedroom into a closet, that's grounds of nonvariance?
I'm not saying he has a lot of alternatives, there's a lot of space here.
This shouldn't be so argumentative, can we?
I'm just, I'm flabbergasted that you took so willing to depart from your precedence without giving us a fact as to why. I want to understand, how does this affect the character of the neighborhood or any neighbor? If you can give, tell me how it does, I will, if I can respond to that.
I, I think the point of this right now is a public hearing, not an, a inquisition of the zoning board.
Then it's horrible.
I mean, this is, let the, the board is supposed to be listening to you give your presentation, and you're accusing them of all of these different, not following this, not doing that.
They say they want to depart from precedent, I want to understand why.
You, you do your prep, you do your presentation, we'll see if there's anybody other members--
I just want to understand why you're willing to depart from precedent.
I'd like to adjourn this.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's best to go back to the homeowner and see if he's willing--
I think it's best that you read, I think it's, I would ask you to read the determinations that we have provided for you, and tell us how, how this departs from that, from all those precedents, not just those, there are, there are, submitted a memorandum which contains a lot of citations. And so, and it's not the question that this is a small variance, that, that this house, we only let you do this. The question is, how does this affect the character of the neighborhood?
You're doing yourself a disservice right now.
Pardon me?
I said, you're doing yourself a disservice right now.
I think, no, I think frankly, that you have done the village a disservice the way you have--
If you want to leave it as it is, I'm against it, I'm open.
You're against it.
I'm against it as it's presented now.
Why?
Because I think this is excessive, and there's other alternative ways of doing this.
Oh, okay. But you don't, but you don't think it affects the character of the neighborhood?
That's one of the factors, there's various factors.
Does it affect the character of the neighborhood?
Why don't I adjourn it?
I adjourn this application.
Did you make the motion?
So move.
All in favor?
Aye. So, it's adjourned until February?
Is there, did, do you want to be heard on this before we adjourn it? No. Do I have a motion to close?
Back to the end of the hearing. The board, we have a motion, second to dismiss.
Oh, okay. An application dismissed without prejudice, Anthony G. Ingraw, 56, Hunting Lane. Do I have a motion to dismiss it?
A motion.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
To go back and, yes, a motion to close this hearing.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Trouble is, this is just going to come right back, just exactly the way that this turned out.
I know, but, you know, a lawyer, a lawyer shouldn't be beating us over the head.
I know. My reaction is the same.
That was a lifesaver, huh?
They had more variance, and now we've got one a second, he's not even going to buy that, so, he might buy that at all.
I mean, he's being a bully.